Okay, Vice Mayor Middleton, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. I will now call this special council meeting to order. Kurt Van, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye, our president.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
And Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Middleton.
Here.
And Mayor Miller is absent.
Do we have any public comment?
Not have any public comment.
Vice Mayor, are you ready for us to begin?
Next item, please.
All right. Well, good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the council. We are pulling together this study session to really update the city council on the ARPA funding. As the council knows, this has been work that's been in progress for some months now. And the council acted very quickly on the bulk of this first round of funding in the area of public safety, which we're really proud of that action and that money is being put to work. And so we really want to talk about the remaining of this year's funding as well as have a discussion about next year's funding. So Bill Zanoni, our interim director of administrative services and his team and finance will really take the council through what we know and where we are now. And we really are looking for direction tonight from the council. I would really like to bring this back in this next meeting and take action on particularly the remaining funding in this year's lot. So with that, Bill, I'll turn it over to you and your team.
Evening. I'm, there we go. I'm Bill Zanoni, interim administrative services director. This evening, Megan, Huber and I together are going to walk you through an update on the American Rescue Plan Act. And at the end of our presentation, actually as we go, if there are questions, feel free to stop us. And when we get towards the end, we are going to pause and hopefully get some direction from council. So what we wanted to start with this evening is the purpose of this workshop. This a follow-up to the discussion that council had on August 12th, when we received an update. We discussed moving forward with the American Rescue Plan Act fund allocation in a phased approach. We're now in phase two, and we'll talk tonight about phase two and beyond. What we want to do is just quickly review again the background information on this legislation, discuss with you potential priority areas, and most importantly, receive input so that we can move forward. So just as a reminder, the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 is an economic stimulus bill which was signed into law in March of this year. It provides a total of $1.9 trillion in fiscal recovery funds with $350 billion of that amount allocated to state and local governments. And within that, $130 billion is allocated or designated for cities and counties. And of that amount, City of Citrus Heights allocation is $15.6 million. We were notified in March that that was our allocation. The amount is to be paid in two installments. We received the first half of $7.8 million in May. And the second payment of $7.8 million is anticipated to be received in about six months. It's supposed to be, according to their guidelines, 12 months after the first payment. So we would anticipate receiving that second installment in May or hopefully no later than early June. Let me go back. There we go. So although the legislation was signed into law in March, the guidance on what that money could be, can be used for, was not released until May. And those were interim guidelines. That's the, that's the 150-page document that lays out, you would think with 150 pages, it would be very, very detailed, but there's still, still a fair amount of questions. But that's the interim guidelines. The Treasury told every, told us that the final guidelines would be released after a 60-day period for, to receive questions. So we anticipated those final guidelines being released late summer. That deadline was July. In the end of September, they issued a notification that the final guidelines would be issued. I think their exact words were late fall, and this was already the end of September, so late fall or thereafter. So as of, as of right now, they have not issued the final guidelines, but they did. Their direction is to continue to operate under the interim guidelines until they tell us differently. So that's what we have to work with right now. So the overarching goal of the American Rescue Plan Act is to provide support to governmental agencies in responding to the negative impacts that were either caused or exacerbated by the COVID pandemic. The guidelines stress that this is one-time funding, although we're getting it in two installments, but it's one-time funding which must be obligated by December of 2014. If the, if any of the funds are used for capital projects, it can be obligated by December 2024 and expended, fully expended two years after that. But unless it's for something with a contract attached to it, it's got to be spent by December 31st of 2024. If not, the funds are to be returned back to the federal government. So the guidelines provide four categories for expending these funds. The first category is to respond to the public health emergency or its negative economic impact resulting from COVID. Or the first portion of that guideline, the public health emergency, examples of costs which don't necessarily apply to the city, but costs which would fall under that category would be COVID prevention and mitigation costs such as vaccine programs, testing and medical expenses. The city could decide to fund those types of activities. Costs associated with behavioral health, healthcare, which might include mental health treatment, crisis intervention, and services to promote access to social service programs. And public health programs such as providing support to vulnerable population and providing access to health services. So those are the first portion as far as responding to the public health emergency. The second portion of that category is responding to the negative economic impacts of COVID. And that's where we think that portion of that category, we believe, applies more to the City of Citrus Heights. Examples that were, are within that category are providing grants for small businesses, which have been negatively impacted by the COVID pandemic, providing aid to nonprofits, providing assistance to industries which were most severely, severely impacted by the COVID pandemic. And the, the, the most significantly impacted industry across the United States is the tourism, travel, hospitality, entertainment industry. So they actually call that out in the guidelines as, as the most significantly impacted industry. And also, under this category is the ability to provide assistance to households that were impacted, negatively impacted by COVID in the form of assistance with rent, mortgage, or futility expenses. Also included within this category of negative, negative economic impacts would be investments in affordable housing and neighborhood services to address socioeconomic disparities. Funding of programs to address homeless issues. And a key expense under this category is rebuilding public sector capacity, which specifically identifies restoring government workforces up to pre-pandemic levels. And that's the category that the city council took action on back in June. I think within a month of when you received the funds, you appropriated 5.3 million of that first $7.8 million allocation to restore 22 positions that were being held vacant in the police department. As we go through and try and identify how these funds will be allocated, a key requirement that we have to keep in mind and document is the need to identify that a financial need is a direct result of the COVID pandemic. So we have got to identify a nexus between the, the need, the request, the need, and what we fund. And we have to document that and have that available if and when it's requested. And then we also have to identify and document how the expenditure of any ARPA funds addresses that identified need. So as we go through this process, that's, that's kind of the key guiding principle that we have to keep in mind. Second category of eligible expenditures is the one that's the most complicated to calculate, but it has the least amount of restrictions on eligible, eligible uses. And that is the ability to replace lost revenue due to COVID. And, or for our city, this is a calculation that's made at four separate points in time, beginning in December of 2020, and for three calendar years after that. For, for Citrus Heights, we calculated the, the lost revenue in 2020 based upon the guidelines that were provided to be approximately $3.2 million. For 2021, our estimate is that number is going to be minimal or zero. So we think 3.2 million is pretty close to what we are going to have under this category for lost revenue. This, this is fairly flexible as far as what those funds can be spent on. They can be spent on infrastructure such as roads or other capital projects. They can be spent on, on cybersecurity programs to strengthen cybersecurity, public safety costs, and just pretty much general government operating expenses. So there's wide flexibility in this category. And then the final two categories, which we don't believe are necessarily applicable to, to our operations, our premium pay for essential workers and investment in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. But just, just as a reminder of the actions that council has taken to date, we've, we've provided two updates on the ARPA, ARPA funding. The first on June 10th, the second on August 12th. And the action taken to council, by council for phase one was to appropriate $5.3 million to restore public safety staffing. So our total, our total allocation is $15.6 million. We've earmarked or appropriated 5.3 million. That leaves $10.3 million remaining to be allocated. Looking at that a little bit differently, our, our first allocation in May was $7.8 million. We've actually received those funds. We've earmarked 5.3 million of those dollars for police department staffing. That means we currently have two, just a little bit under $2.5 million of the first allocation available to appropriate and spend. Once this, the second payment is actually received, at this point, I don't know any reason why we wouldn't receive it, but we don't have it yet, and we're dealing with the federal government. So once we do receive that additional $7.8 million, then we will have a total of $10 million to allocate. So with that background, I'm going to hand it over to Megan to move forward.
Bill, before we do that, Vice Mayor, can I ask some questions?
Absolutely. I was going to say, are there any questions from council members? Mr. Daniels, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Bill, so we got the 7.8 million. We allocated 5.3 million. So we've got to decide something to do, I guess, with the other two and a half. But the, the 7.8 million that we got, where did we park that money? Does it go into the general fund reserve? Or did we create some other fund where we, we stowed that on our books?
We set up a separate fund, a subset of the general fund, but we set up a separate fund. And we're charging, we're charging all of the expenses, well, the police, police staffing related expenses to that fund. So that we can, we, we didn't want to co-mingle it and have to go back and try and separate it because it's, it's mostly salaries and related labor costs for police, so.
And then that 5.3 million will be spent over a certain time period. We obviously haven't spent it all at once since we're doing these rehires, we're bringing people on, and that money is going to be able to go for that, correct?
That's correct. That $5.3 million was intended to cover two fiscal years.
Okay, and then so we had a, a financial report during the last meeting, which was much nicer than we had anticipated. And what, but we are still, our, our bottom line was still not real great. We've got some, we've got a line of credit out there that we've got quite a chunk of money against. Do you know, or has it been thought of, if, if we are able to take that fund that is still there, and certainly not all of it, but maybe take some of it and loan it to the city in a sense, to where we could maybe pay down our debt if we wanted to, or, or whatever. But my, my question is just very general. Do you know if there's the ability to take something like that and loan it to the city so that money's there? It's upfront, it's already here. Do something with it now, and then as we get those monies in that we've already budgeted in that we would normally get in, as you explained during the last meeting over a period of time, then replace that money, where you're going to repay that loan into this fund? Does that make sense? Are you still with me? Vice Mayor, can you hear me? Can anybody hear me?
Yes, I can, Brett. I heard your whole.
Maybe I hope, hopefully he didn't pass out.
Yeah, it seems to be a problem coming out of the chambers. I caught your, your whole question, and I could even attempt to answer about it. Let's wait for, see if we can solve this here. Anybody else on the staff hear me, Colleen, or?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Issue seems to be in the chambers.
Okay, never mind. I heard you, Brett's genie, but I'm offside as well.
Okay, can you hear us now? I think we fixed the technical.
I can hear you, Amy. Yes.
Okay, shall we move along?
Yes.
Excellent. So with all of the information that Bill has.
Hold on, hold on. Is Bill not with us?
Yes.
He didn't, he didn't hear the response that Bill gave.
Oh. Oh. Did anybody hear it?
I didn't hear it, no. I heard you, but no response.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So, so yes. No, there are, there are two, there are two items that are not allowed as eligible expenses for these funds. The first is to be used for repayment of debt, which would, which would, making a payment on a line of credit would be. And the second is to use these, these, this funding to replenish reserves.
Okay, so we can't, I understand what you're saying. We can't create a loan type process. Can I ask you to go back to page seven of your presentation for just a minute? And I had a question on that. Okay, thank you. So I'm looking at that page, and I'm very happy to see that because what I want to hopefully see us do is somehow reach back out to the private sector, which is to me extremely important. We, you know, we've already dedicated a lot of this money to the public sector. But reaching out to the private sector is something I'm hoping my fellow council members are going to support. And so, Bill, when I look at this, literally, when I see something as, as far as tourism, travel, and hospitality, can you give me an example of what that would be? I mean, you know, what are we going to do? Give everybody a, a Southwest Airlines travel voucher somewhere?
No.
How would we even do that?
So examples, what, what, some cities, cities that have, cities that have hotels are, are using some of these funds to, to provide assistance to those, to that portion of the industry. An example in Citrus Heights, it's travel, tourism, travel, hospitality, and entertainment. So it could be something in, in our city, could be something like the movie theater. That would be an example, and it's something that was directly impacted by the COVID pandemic.
Okay, like, like even our little, maybe perhaps our little theater or little playhouse?
Yeah, they were shut down, no doubt about that.
Yes.
And then on the small business grant side, so same thing with small businesses. They would have to show that, that they were impacted in some way. And then, and then we might be able to do something with that, businesses that had to close down. Anything like that? I mean, are there going to be like 100?
And they don't even have to have been closed down if they, they just have to have been negatively impacted by COVID. So certainly if they had to close and are trying to reopen. But if they, if they, there was a hardship that they can demonstrate, and typically there, there's ways to do that. We can, they can provide their, you know, their tax return. There's ways to demonstrate that. But there just has to be a connection between their operations and the pandemic.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
I do have a question now, and that is if, if those, some of those, some of those businesses receive PPP loans or some other kind of way that the, they've already been compensated, would certainly, would that offset what they might be eligible for? Or is there a double dipping allowed there, or?
I think that, that is something that we could put in our guidelines to ask that question, that if they received any other federal assistance, and then use that in making a determination whether they were eligible.
I think that's good, yeah.
Right, if there are no other comments or questions, Megan, go ahead.
Thank you. So as Bill has laid out, there are plethora of considerations and parameters that we must account for as we're standing up the next phases of our ARPA allocation funding. It's an extremely, it's a situation with much gravity, given that these are one-time funds that were responsible for stewarding effectively and to meet direct need in our community. As Bill also mentioned, we are restricted in liquid availability of the funds and have to take that into account in our planning as well. Finally, as Bill mentioned, the guidelines are still interim. So we need to move in a very intentional manner to manage all of those factors. And would like to present to you now the foundation that we have built for our phase two ARPA funding allocation and beyond. So first and foremost, last time we were before council on August 12th, we shared how the guidelines underscored a strong recommendation to maximize community engagement around ARPA spending. That is how we know to, how we can spend the funds in the most effective manner and how we ensure equitable, equitable and inclusive access to this opportunity. So staff since then has stood up a really comprehensive landing page to serve as a central resource for all things ARPA information. We have provided Cliff's Notes on the guidelines to be able to educate our resident and business community in the challenge that we're grappling with here, a great challenge, by the way. And on the central landing page, we also have our community survey results for folks to view. If you recall, that was the other action items, that, action that we promised council was a COVID community survey to be able to quantify and have substantive data to be able to build the foundation that we're reviewing to ensure that we're deploying these funds most effectively. And I'm very happy to report an extremely successful and statistically valid survey. We used our signature flash vote system, which is email engagement direct to our residents and businesses that we also supported with social media communications. These are third-party expert-designed questions to be able to ensure that we're getting to the, to the meat of the matter. In order to ensure it's statistically valid, flash vote stays open for a period of 48 hours. But again, to ensure equitable and inclusive access in this data gathering, we extended the survey via Google for a longer period of time to make sure we're capturing all the data that we can. Also important to note that it was translated into three different languages for our diverse community. So a quick summary of the flash vote survey results. It was important to us to gauge the knowledge of ARPA, of the folks that we were responding. And it was about a third, a third, and a third of folks who were not. And it was about a third, a third and a third of folks who were not familiar with ARPA funding, folks who were somewhat familiar, and then about a third of folks who were very familiar. So the survey served as a great education tool as well. And the survey also drilled down, once we educated around the guideline restrictions, we drilled down into potential different bucket categories of allocations, which we'll review later and show a nexus between the COVID recovery map phasing that we've designed, how it's meeting those community needs. So with that, this is the next phase in our timeline as, as well as what we see moving forward. As Bill mentioned, we completed Phase One in May of this year to restore police department staffing levels using around $5.3 million of ARPA funding. We are before you in the really important feedback gathering steps so that we can design Phase Two in the best and most effective way possible, which will target recovery mechanisms to support small businesses, nonprofits, as well as the travel, tourism and entertainment industry. We project that once Phase Two is rolling and we receive the second installment of ARPA funding, which Bill mentioned we're expecting in May. Although again, that's evolving. We will be ready in spring of 2022 to deploy towards priority needs that you see listed here that are supported by community survey data, including homelessness prevention, blight abatement and housing and resident support. And finally, we project that Phase Four will be in summer of next year to address the allocation of the revenue loss portion of the ARPA funding, which as council recalls from Bill's synopsis, can include potential infrastructure initiatives. Which, as Bill mentioned, revenue loss projections right now are about $3.2 million. Which means for Phase Two and Phase Three, as we're looking to deploy programs that address these community COVID recovery needs, we, we have the task before us to allocate around $7.1 million. And that's the conversation that we'd like to start having today is how we prioritize and phase this deployment. Bill, anything to add while we're on this slide? So the chart that you see here are the community COVID recovery needs that were prioritized by survey takers. An important distinction here is the question did not ask them to prioritize these needs. It asked them how you would split a dollar to deploy funding among these recovery needs. So you can see how these initiative buckets are directly related to the ARPA COVID recovery guidelines. Coming in with Phase Two, there was strong support to spend substantive portions of a hypothetical dollar to support local businesses and nonprofits with grants, as well as address shopping center vacancies caused by COVID. We see a potential nexus there, certainly with entertainment as well, given that there are highly visible vacancies as it relates to entertainment usage. And then moving into the Phase Three that we talked about, our survey subjects allocated a significant portion of a dollar to address homelessness problems and then also help residents recover from the impacts of COVID-19, which fits into our Phase Three allocation mechanism. And then finally, Phase Four, although a high priority spending of that dollar, investing in city infrastructure, if you recall, infrastructure investments falls under revenue loss, which will not be finalized until, one, we receive the second installment of the funding and two, we have that final revenue loss calculation. So to dive a little deeper into the foundation that we'd like to build for Phase Two and where we would like city council's feedback this evening to ensure we're doing it in the most effective way to be able to maximize recovery. We envision that the Phase Two program to deploy small business and nonprofit support, the, the process will identify how applicants will demonstrate COVID impact in that application and approval process. Harkening back to Councilmember Daniel's question and also Councilmember Shaver's question around considerations like PPE and similar. We want to be really intentional about how we're designing this application process to, to make it easy. We know there are businesses who need support and we also need to think all the way around it as well. So we'll define the use of the funds during that process. We also need to determine funding amounts. So if you recall back in the chart, Phase Two and Phase Three together have around $7.1 million to allocate. That's a conversation that we need to have is, you know, what portion of that hypothetical dollar do we allocate to each of those COVID recovery needs? And we also envision a separate program to support that travel, tourism and entertainment industry recovery section that was called out by the US Treasury as the most impacted and in need industry for ARPA recovery. And because it's most impacted, we see that having a unique needs in terms of program guidelines and COVID impact definition as well. So next steps, once we receive and are able to incorporate feedback, we'd certainly like to keep this ball moving down the field quickly. So we anticipate coming away from study session with really great feedback from you and coming back to you December 9th via a department report to present and refine these Phase Two program principles that we're talking about via an outline based on tonight's discussion and feedback. We'd like to come away with a recommendation for funding allocations for the Phase Two programs. And at that time, we'd also like to invite business community feedback and input. We feel that that is a perfect time to be able to do that when we have the bones of program principles together so that we can have a more substantive conversation with our business community, continue to refine it into really sharp and actionable guidelines, which when they would then bring back to you at the January 13th council meeting as an action item to approve the Phase Two program guidelines and appropriate the funds for the Phase Two programs.
Wonderful. So I'm going to open it up for any council comments and feedback.
Oh gosh, that's lots to digest. Could you go back to this, the, the slide, this one, the one you just? The next one, please. So I trying to, was trying to stay with you, Megan, when you're describing the results from the survey. And, and I recall you stating the heavy response and support for the helping residents and homelessness. And, oh, wait a second. Oh, I read that wrong before. Okay, never mind my question. But I guess the question, my overall question is, given the percentages we got in the way of public feedback, why you laid it out the way you did? You basically not, you didn't follow like top to bottom, but based, and I'm not, I'm not questioning it from a critical standpoint. I'm just trying to understand it. So so was, was the next priority basically for us to address the needs of business? That's our next priority after, after law enforcement staffing? Am I here, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. And then from there, the residents and from there, city infrastructure and then the leftovers.
Correct. And, and the, the reason for that is availability of liquid funds. As Bill laid out, right now there's about $2 million and change in ARPA funding available. So we need to match actionable items with the resources that are available. So when we, when we look at things like homelessness prevention, blight abatement and housing and resident support, it's our intention to, to use a large portion of that funding and to lay that out over a course of, of two years. Number one, we'll, we'll ultimately need more than that $2 million to create actionable recovery in the Phase Three column. And, and then number two, we have also heard from council in strategic planning that deploying business support for COVID recovery is a priority.
Well, oh, and it is. And so the, the supportive business funding from Phase could start with, with Phase One money too, or do we?
Absolutely.
Okay, and so, so the actual percentages are fluid. So if we saw, if we saw an opportunity to really strengthen business in Citrus Heights, we could support that financially. It means taking some away from something else, I understand. With that, as, as time goes on, if that looks like what we need to do, then we could do it, I, as I understand.
Absolutely. And staff will also work to tee up the programs that are in Phase Three to be ready for when the, the second installment is received.
Okay.
So.
May I ask another question?
Absolutely.
Okay, so looking at Phase One, we are done with Phase One. So that it might, do I understand that correctly? We have allocated what we're going to allocate for, for policing recovery? Even though it may not already all be spent yet, and clearly it isn't because it's a payroll issue. Is, so the 5.353 million is that we've, we've capped that for law enforcement?
At, that is correct. That is, that is the amount that was calculated as the cost to restore the 22 positions that were being held vacant in the police department.
Okay.
The council could decide as part of the lost revenue, when you get to that point and that discussion, those dollars could be, again, they're one-time dollars. So you don't necessarily want to use them for staffing, but you, those dollars, you have great flexibility with what you want to use those dollars for.
So what's, what's the timeframe, refresh my memory on, on the spending of the 5.3? It's all going to be spent upfront, but I know part of it's recruiting, training, but some of it is, is payroll support.
That is, it's mostly payroll or salary and benefits. And it's over a two fiscal year period, this year and next fiscal year.
Okay, that's what I want to know. Thank you.
Councilmember Daniels, do you have any questions?
Yeah, yeah, thank you very much. One question, when we start deciding to, how we're going to hand this money out, will that take council approval on all levels or any level at all?
It'll definitely take city council approval as far as appropriating the funds. So you will, you will, we will come back to you with a, with resolutions appropriating these dollars for the, the general categories. And then it's up to you as far as and as getting down to the level of detail is proving, proving individual loans. If you want to set the guidelines and then have reports back on how those funds were dispersed, or if you want to actually approve each individual loan. That's, that's a council decision, but you will definitely be involved in appropriating the funds.
Thank you. And, and I think we should see that, we, we should set a number that I think is fairly low because I think it's going to be very important to the community, to the taxpayers to say that we had a direct hand in what was decided and not just say that, well, you know, we set a million for this and somebody else decided. So I'm hoping my other council members will want to see those kind of requests come back. And Bill, you, you just used the word loan. Are these loans or are?
Oh, I'm sorry. No.
Yeah, I didn't think that was right.
Grants.
Now, it's my question too, yeah.
You can't, there is an option to do loans, but if, if you do loans, we have to turn around and use them again and by the end of the three-year, so grants, I should have said grants.
Understood. And then, so just a couple of comments. I really hope that what we focus on when we're looking at small business recovery. And let me, let me just say this first. I, I hope that we don't look too much towards nonprofits in this because we've done a lot with nonprofits. And, and I don't know that that has suffered through this so much in what I'll call our normal or regular help with nonprofits. So I'm not against that at all, but I'm just hoping that we understand what I feel is, is the whole purpose of this act was to rescue American businesses mainly. And so I'm hoping that we look to prop up businesses that have the ability to then move forward with the future with success and not simply, you know, they had a problem and they dealt with it or whatever. They've recovered from it and not that we can't go back and, and, you know, help with a little bit of that or whatever. But hopefully what we're looking for are, are funds that can go to businesses that may still even be struggling and they have a plan to move forward. The plan is reasonable and they will be a success because then eventually, you know, if they're retail or whatever, eventually some of those funds will come back in the form of, you know, taxes and stuff like that. So hopefully we're very careful with that and not just giving money. And I think we will be careful. And then, and then the final thing was in Phase Three. I don't feel that this plan was necessarily put together to deal with things. And, and these are like one-time things, blight abatement, homelessness prevention, housing and residential support. I could see us supporting people who are still affected by COVID, who may be on the verge of homelessness because of that. But there've been a whole lot of programs that are already been in place, rent relief and whatnot. And so I would hope that, that we're being very careful in that respect. And again, really coming back with a harder stance and a harder support for small businesses to actually recover because of what happened with COVID. That I think is where the, the main hurt has happened. I would love to see us working a lot with our non-corporate type of restaurants. You know, our mom and pops and stuff like that, hopefully. And, and seeing, you know, who we can keep open or if they had to close down, they can open up again and, and again, be a success. I think it's really important for people who want these funds to show how they're going to be a success. And then again, I'm, I'm really kind of leery on how much we do with it towards homelessness. And that's obviously not to say that that's not important. It's extremely important. And we're using a lot of funds for that and other funds are coming in from different directions. And we've propped that up already with some other funds that came in. And so I think we've done pretty good there. And whereas I don't think we've done a whole lot, you know, we can hopefully do more for small businesses. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Daniels. Councilmember Shaver?
So certainly I'd like to sort of back up Councilmember Daniel's statement. I think this, I'd like to see the bulk of Phase Two and Phase Three funds go to small business. You know, the, I think the big boxes, we've shown the big boxes have done quite well through the pandemic. I would love to see a competitive grant program put together so that the, the small businesses can really truly demonstrate how they've been affected by COVID. Such a perfect example is Sunrise Rollerland where that couple really did struggle. But that's just, I, I don't want to pick on them particularly, but I would say that there's other businesses that could demonstrate the real need. And, and I, with the, also the emphasis on this competitive grant program, they would want to show us what they're doing to attract more business to Citrus Heights. And not just to say, well, okay, we're going to repave the parking lot because we want it to look nicer. We want to do things that are, that are really are, are, would bring customers to Citrus Heights. So I certainly want, would like to see that as far as the homelessness prevention, the blight, blight abatement. I would say that the, the bulk of this, these funds, the Phase Two and Phase Three really do need to go to small business if there's, if there is. If, if we put this out there and only 10 businesses actually apply for it and we have funds that are left over, certainly we can look at some of the, some of these other items that, that really are more more broad in terms of, because I, more broad in terms of, because I, I'm not even sure what it would look like if we're, could you, Megan, maybe you could give me an example of how we would, uh, support housing re- and resident support? What would that look like? What, is there an example of that that we would?
One, one, um, example could be, um, affordable housing. Um, and, um, and, and example within that category, uh, in citrus heights, we have a, a qualified census tract and that, again, that's called out in these guidelines. So, um, Sayonara, um, housing that, that needs to be built there, that some of these funds could go to help, uh, those affordable housing, that would just be an example of a possibility.
Okay. Uh, I, I think I said my piece with regard to, I'd like to see a competitive grant program put out. I'd like to see a, a serious effort to market this, whatever this is, through the entire city, not just certain segments of it. And I, I'd like to see a, a nice wide channel of, of, uh, businesses that it would, that, that I would like to see this exposure get out there and really do a, a strong, um, campaign to advertise that this money is available.
That's our specialty. Council member Shaver, if we can, um, I'd love to just dig a little bit deeper on feedback from you, especially from an economic development perspective, as we're talking about homelessness in particular. To be frank, right now, that's one of the largest complaints that we do hear from businesses, right? The businesses who stayed in operation during COVID, who don't necessarily have year-over-year income statements that show loss, but have had this experience of, of, you know, fighting the battle of crime prevention through environmental design and, uh, keeping their business safe and secure, um, in, in less than desirable circumstances.
I would see this as a wonderful opportunity for them to bring their ideas forward on how we might to address their concerns with homelessness.
Here, yeah. Thank you for that.
I have a couple of comments, uh, before we're done here. And, um, you mentioned, Megan, that the survey, the flash vote was done in three languages. Could you tell me which three they were?
English, oh, English is the baseline, Spanish, Russian, Ukrainian.
Wonderful. And so when we're going through, we're looking for these applications for, uh, these grants for these small businesses. I would like to see more of that, right? Because what we're trying to do is make sure we're having some diversity and equity. We know that we have a huge Slavic population and Hispanic population in our city. And these are people who, um, who are first or second generation, who may not be able to understand. So a lot of handholding is going to be necessary. So while I understand, uh, council member Shaffer's sentiment about making it competitive, I think that by doing that, we might actually detract and deter some people from actually participating in the process. So finding a nice way to strike a balance there and making sure that we're also, like I said, addressing that diversity and inclusiveness. And also looking at, you know, homelessness is, is, is a big deal. I know that a lot of business owners have complained about that. We see it in our inboxes about, you know, what can we do about this? So, um, asking for community input about how, like, and what their ideas are around design and how we can make things better, that's amazing. But it's really our job to, you know, it's really figure that out and help them solve the problem, not to put the burden back onto them.
But just a, uh, a follow-up, uh, if I may, I don't think that, um, those, I, those, um, priorities are mutually, uh, exclusive. I believe that we can incorporate, um, reaching out to the different language groups with the competitive grant, um, protocol. If, if, you know, if that's part, as being part of it, you know, we just make sure that we do it in their language so they can understand that, uh, this is their opportunity. So I think it would be a good idea to make part of it competitive, but if there's a real need, and we've got the funds that we support that need, if they can show us that it's going to help them survive and move forward and do the things that we've mentioned tonight, like encourage more business in citrus heights and so forth. It's not, in my mind, it's not an either or, it's, it's a both, so. But I think we're all, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're all kind of on the same page that we need to support our business community.
Mayor Middleton, um, I just wanted to note that the mayor has joined the Zoom as well.
Thank you. Welcome, welcome, Mayor Mill- Miller.
I've been here for, uh, about a half hour, uh, listening in, and I concur with a lot of the statements. I may have missed, and I apologize for being late. Um, I may have missed it. Did we talk about any relief funds? And, and I, and I agree with the business part, but I know our community center suffered greatly. Was that part of the discussion?
No, not specifically.
Yeah, we've had a great loss there. I thought these funds qualified for. I also would like to see the navigator program expanded. That didn't, doesn't seem like it'd be too much money and again, benefit our, our businesses and our residents, um, with the intervention. And also, I, I think Bill brought it up, uh, we still have that house, the housing units to replace in Sayonara. And, uh, it, it shouldn't be a huge investment, but that is a way to get, uh, slow, low-income housing in our city. So, um, I would support all the items discussed tonight, plus those that I added.
Yeah, the navigator program would fall under the, the homelessness prevention. So that, that is a, an example under that category. And the community center, actually, um, the loss in revenue from the community center is, uh, a good portion of that contributed to the, the, the revenue loss. So, um, if, if the council were to, to, um, allocate any funds to the community center, it would fall under the, with a lost revenue category.
In phase four, right, Bill?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
We have one quick comment. I, I know we're getting close, short on time, but, uh, I would just like to address, uh, certainly, uh, the competitive grant program. I think that there are, um, some of the segments of our community that there were some concerns that Vice Mayor Middleton brought up with regard to language barriers. Uh, having interacted with several of the folks there, they're a very tight-knit community. I do think we could round up, uh, committees that could address those issues to help them. Like we talked about handholding, um, the trust that comes from somebody speaking their language is super important. And, uh, and reaching out to the, I can think of a few people that could really be of great assistance in that respect. So, uh, I certainly like to work with staff to, to identify those individuals that might be, uh, great assistants in that respect.
I appreciate that so much. Trusted advisors are, are so important, uh, in, in local community initiatives.
Well, if there is not anything else, we can take a two-ish minute break and come back to, um, general session.